Welcome. The April 17th meeting of the Planning Commission is now in session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and stand if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome this evening. Kate, may we have the roll call please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Sean Keer is excused. Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our April 3rd meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the April 3rd meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. Now is that time of our meeting for public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. So if there's something you'd like to say, you may have up to three minutes. Sent up here and speak directly into the microphone. Seeing none, alright. Are there any, no final orders, resolutions, or written communications tonight? We do have a public hearing.
Do you hear the agenda changes?
Oh, I think so. Any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
Okay, great. So it is now 6:02 PM and the public hearing for file CUP 2018-01 is now open. This public hearing concerns a request for conditional use permit for a school building adjacent to the existing St. James Santiago Episcopal Church. The project site is on the east side of Highway 101 at 2490 Northeast Highway 101 in the multiple-family residential RM zone. The applicant is Central Coast Builders Incorporated, representing the property owner, the Episcopal Parish of St. James. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to desire and ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? I have to declare a bias in this matter and the reason for that is I'm a member of the Episcopal Church of St. James and I am on the board and the board of the church also serves as a board for the school. So I have asked Patty Crowen to chair this portion of the meeting. Patty, your honor.
Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a commissioner to participate in this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to consider this matter? Okay, seeing none. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS 197.7635. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. Deborah?
Okay, this is awkward because I don't have them in front of me but I believe, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, 1720 is RM Residential Multi-Family District. We have 1752, which is supplemental.
Do you want me to read them from the report?
Yes, please do.
Yes, 1720 RM Multiple Family Residential, 17.52 supplementary regulations, Chapter 17.56 off-street parking and loading, and Section 17.80.010 provisions applying to special uses schools.
That's it? That's it.
Okay. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria which has just been read, or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals, on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedure. A brochure outlining the procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. Generally, the order of the proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, the staff report, questions of staff, the applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, rebuttal by the applicant, requests of continuance or to leave the record open, the close of the hearing, the close of the record, request to submit written argument, deliberations, and decision. The city has established some time limits. The applicant will have 15 minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy of that to our recorder, which is Kate over here. Okay, please present the staff report.
Thank you. St. James, as you heard, is asking for a conditional use permit for the St. James Santiago School. This is showing you the location of the church and school property. It is 2.61 acres and it is just, it's accessed from the highway by Northeast 25th Street. As you can see, the neighbors to the north are vacant. This is, and it is zoned also for RM Residential Multi-Family. To the east, obviously, is the Curtis Ball Diamonds and it is zoned as park. To the south and to the west, we have commercial zoning and commercial uses. The proposal is to add a building to the site. I am showing with this slide that the, I have overlaid the site plan on our computer map and it shows that the building is centrally located. The new building is just to the northeast of the existing building. The original plan I got was a little off as far as the location of the, of the building as drawn on the site plan. I just received a revised version today, which I haven't had a chance to incorporate into the slideshow, but I will be checking that to make sure that everything is as I believe it is. This zooms in on the site plan and shows that the, shows the existing building in relationship to the, I mean, the existing building in relationship to the new building. For those people who are watching this or streaming this, this might not be very clear. You can go to the planning commission's April 17th meeting and access the packet and as the commissioners can see it in their packet very clearly. So the building is going to include six classrooms and some of them have partitions so they can open them up into larger rooms. It also will include an office and restrooms. The school has been operating as part, or inside the church and since it started and it is only because they are now, and we have considered it an accessory use to the church. But now that it is requesting an addition and a building of its own on the school property, we are asking for it to get a conditional use permit so, and so that we can consider it as a separate and second principal use on the site. The building as proposed, I've got a white arrow here showing the northwest corner of the building and this is the entrance now to the church and school. This stake right here, I didn't know if it'd show up very well, so again, a big white arrow to point to the stake is the southwest corner, the southeast corner here, and this shed will have to go away. And then the northeast corner up here in the, in the trees. This is a gravel road that goes on the east side of the building and will remain. So we have already conducted a site plan review and I will get to, I will go over some of the findings on that in just a minute, but basically, the conditional use criteria are five and I'm going to go through each one of those and talk about how this proposal meets those criteria. So the first is that the proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. We have in our comprehensive plan a section that is called Residential Multi-Family and it is for the purpose of allowing for high-density residential and also service, professional services. And we have adopted a zoning ordinance that is consistent in conformance with the comprehensive plan and implements the comprehensive plan. And in that zoning ordinance, we have a zone called Residential Multi-Family. And the purpose of that, again, is to allow for high-density residential and services. So, thank you, Richard. So because the zone allows as a conditional use for public and private schools and it is in, and the zoning ordinance is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, we can conclude that the proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan as long as the school gets your approval for a conditional use permit and it operates under those conditions. The second criteria for you to consider is that the site is adequate for the proposed use. Let me do a little catch-up here. The, the building that is proposed is 200, or 2,739 square feet and it's a wood frame building. With the existing building, the coverage is still only about 9% of the lot. It's a 2.61 acre lot, so, and the, and the zone allows for 45% coverage, so 9% is not a lot of coverage on this lot, certainly within the maximum. And so that allows for substantial area for, for the other uses and requirements such as parking and setbacks. So when, we did our site plan review and we looked at each of our criteria in those zones and in the parking standards and the, you know, various other standards and found that with criteria that we generated and I included in your packet, that this would be acceptable and would work out well on this, on this site. So, but I want to recap just a little bit because it does address this criteria that the proposed site is adequate. So the school is going to be, it's going to require about, I'm sorry, here, let's see. The church requires 30 parking spaces and the site shows 35. And the church and the school can share the spaces because they need them at different times and different days of the week. So the attached site plan review that I talked about gives more details about the required number of parking spaces and the setbacks. The setbacks required are about, based on the height of the building, are about eight and a half feet and we have setbacks that are substantially larger than that. The, okay, let's see, okay, hold on a minute. The proposed new building already has been the subject of the site plan review and the only thing that we did have come up is the, the fire chief couldn't be there and he did comment that it appears access requirements will be met, but he was, thought the overall information was vague, so I think they need to touch base with the fire chief. And one of our conditions does say that it has to meet, the, the plan has to meet the approval of the fire chief. He said, please provide water supply, fire flow information for the area and he recommends a fire protection system to be included and he's not saying it's required, but again, I think that it's important for the school to have a conversation with the fire chief. So other site plan conditions of approval. One is that new utilities need to be underground, that they need to install plantings to cover any area disturbed by the construction because it is an existing site, it has mature landscaping and does not require any new landscaping. I, also, a significant factor here that I haven't mentioned is that the addition to the church with this new building is, does not exceed 50% of the existing valuation of improvements. And because of that, some of our standards do not apply, such as the landscape requirements do not apply. But as I said, in this case, fortunately, you know, it has very abundant landscaping anyway. Also, infrastructure improvements do not, requirements in 15, or 1752-230 do not apply because that's only if it's, exceeds 50% of the existing value. So what we have asked is that they install plantings to cover any disturbed area, which is important for, so that we don't have erosion. Also, submit inventory of trees to be removed and a tree protection plan for those to be remain, to remain. Maybe you noticed when I was showing you the northeast corner especially, it is in, in the trees, so some of them will have to come down. Artificial lighting, we did not actually see a light fixture, but we do have a requirement that artificial lighting not shine or glare on adjoining properties here in the right way and considering where this is in relationship to other prop uses and the highway, that's not going to be much of an issue. Other site plan conditions include that we ask that they clarify the number of spaces and dimensions of the parking spaces. We did talk about this during the site plan review. I feel very confident that they have adequate space, it's just a matter of how the lines are drawn on the, on this pavement at the, at this time. So established joint use of parking, we do need to have some kind of a statement from them that they are going to share the parking and that is not a difficult condition to comply with. They need two ADA parking spaces, including one van accessible, and they have shown that on, they have shown that they have room for that on the site plan. So they will have to have proper signage and markings. And they need to maintain a four-foot perimeter buffer and site obscuring fence hedge or plantings where they are adjoining, where parking is adjoining residential zone. And only on the north side is that really an issue. There is only about four feet from the lot line, the north lot line, and there is landscaping there now. It's because the area to the north is vacant, it's not so critical now, but as that develops, that will become important to the neighboring properties. So again, this is under another section. I called out again that the applicant must restore any landscaping areas so that there is no bare dirt when they're finished. Also, the school, in, in the school provisions applying to special uses schools, it says that schools shall provide a site obscuring fence of at least five feet, not more than six feet in height, but not more than six feet in height, separating the play area from abutting lots. They do have some fence in the south part of their lot in conjunction with a cell tower that's on the property and, but they, and they, and then the building is, encloses the, the play area from the north, north side and, and the west side. So that is a requirement that is for preschools and kindergarten, just to make sure that the children are safe in this, so they need to make sure that they have adequate fencing that, that protects the kids at play. The school shall maintain a play area of at least 100 square feet per kindergarten pupil and maintain a lot area of at least one acre per 90 pupils. So they have a lot of lot area and so they have 2.61 acres, so that's really not going to be an issue. I'm not sure exactly what their ultimate goal is for enrollment, somewhere in the 60 student range. So as you can tell, that's, that's plenty of ground for that area, for that number of students. So now we have, we've hit two conditional use criteria and I'm, one is that it's in conformance with the comp plan, one is that there's adequate space on the site. Now we're going to number three, which is that streets and highways are adequate to handle the traffic. Okay, so this is 25th Street and it connects the lot for the school and the church to the highway. And as you can see, it doesn't have sidewalks. One of the things, and that, you know, would be a nice addition in case people are trying to walk to the church and school from, from the highway. The school, I understand, uses a pathway that goes from the school to, through the east side of the property over into Curtis Park and they cross Curtis Park and go and, and can get up to 22nd Street, which takes them to Ocean Lake School and, and the bus. And 22nd has bike lanes, they have sidewalks and I don't, I don't believe they do have bike lanes, but they do have sidewalks. So they can get around safely without going down towards the highway, but they do a lot of walking around town. You've probably seen the group out visiting various parts of town. So right now, the church and the school are the only uses connecting to 25th. Eventually, as properties develop to the north, we may have more traffic on 25th depending on how the developers choose to make their connections to other streets. We, as city planners, encourage as many connections as possible, so that, that's something that we can anticipate in the future. The Department of Transportation has jurisdiction over the intersection here and we have heard nothing from them about the new building or the expansion of the school. The anticipated increase in the enrollment does not trigger the requirements for a traffic impact analysis. And as I said, it doesn't trigger the infrastructure requirements because it doesn't exceed 50%. So this is from, a view from the other side. This is from the highway, across, across the highway, still on Northeast 25th. And as you can see from this, from this side, you can't see the school or, or the church from the highway. So this is, you know, I guess a reason why we don't have to be too, too concerned at this point about the impact of the project on adjoining uses. Again, you can see that it's, it's rather isolated from any adjoining uses. But that may change with the development of these undeveloped properties.
Can you point out that pathway that they have to 22nd?
Well, maybe we can have Julie Fiedler actually point that out, but she pointed it out to me when I was on the site and it, it comes out this side and they walk either through the park or down key to 22nd. We'll let you, when you come up, you can maybe point it out because they can't hear you from back there. Okay. So this is the zoning that I described earlier, but you can see commercial on this side, which generally we don't think of as being overly sensitive kind of land uses. The, all the multifamily residential and then the park on this side. And let's see, I think egress, ingress, internal circulation, pedestrian access, setbacks, height and bulk of buildings, walls and fences, landscaping are all things that we consider when we're talking about the adverse impacts. But I think I've covered most of those already. The distance from 25th Street to the closest corner of the existing building is over 120 feet and to the proposed building is well over 200 feet, based on the height of the building, 21 feet, seven inches. As I mentioned, the rear and side setbacks are, that are required are eight and a half feet, so you can see by comparison, this is, this is quite spacious. And the east side setback appears to be about 40 feet. I'm going to have to verify that now that I have a revised site plan and as I said, I haven't done that yet. But they will be required to do the required setback at minimum. And I think it's going to be considerably more. The south setback is 160 feet, the, and I also mentioned the coverage is way below the required. So the north row of parking is, is the one that is, and you'd have to see it right along the edge here. That's, that's where we are closest to the property line and there still appears to be four-foot perimeter buffer there. The fifth criteria for conditional use permits is that in historic scenic or cultural areas, proposed structures will be complementary. This is really not in an area that I would describe that way. The only historic building we have is the Dorchester House and that is about 500 feet up the highway. So that is, and you can't see one from the other, so I don't think that that is an applicable criteria in this case. Now, what I would suggest to the planning commission is that you take public testimony. You determine whether the project complies with the criteria and if it does or can meet the criteria with conditions, make findings for granting the conditional use permit. And so if you don't, if you have any questions, now would be a good time.
Any questions for staff? I, I just have a couple. Are there any additional building requirements in our code for schools?
Well, that's a question for our building official, actually, and rather than for me. And the applicant will, when they get, if they get a conditional use permit, submit building plans and our official will go over that and make sure that they have, you know, done everything correctly and safely.
So is that the time when they will, they will So is that the time when they will, they will be in contact with the fire, fire department folks to talk about the building safety, sprinklers, egress, ingress, that type of discussion will happen then?
Yes, and I think that the contractor maybe already has done that since our site plan review. If he has not, he may do that, you know, anytime, but the building official, building inspector will also be looking at those things as well. So for instance, if sprinklers were required, our building officials would know that and require that. From the wording of the police chief, I'm not sure that it is, but that's not my area of expertise.
Okay. And just one other, in the, I know we're looking at a new comp plan and we're looking at all sorts of things and we have a new transportation plan. I apologize for not looking this up myself, but is there any plan to extend 25th Street beyond where it is right now?
We did not get into details on local streets in the transportation system plan, but as that property develops, the adjoining property owners will, may or may not, you know, choose to develop that access. As I recall, we have some overlap on that. The property directly north belongs to the city right now, but it is for sale. And I believe that there is an overlap where there's, the city's property directly abuts 25th Street and then they have an easement, if I am correct, so that they could actually put an access there. Otherwise, the property owners will need to work with the Episcopal Church on, you know, developing either easements or, you know, some kind of a land swap or something like that. The properties to the north also have the opportunity to connect to Key Street, both at the north end through a private owner and through the city's, it abuts the south side of the city's property.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Deborah.
You're welcome.
I'd like to invite the applicant to do their presentation now.
Yeah. Back to the mound.
I was thinking.
Julie, would you like the site plan up or?
Sure, whatever, wherever there are questions.
Okay. You have 15 minutes for your presentation and if you want to save five minutes of it for rebuttal, if you think that you might need that, you can do that.
That's wonderful. My name is Julie Fiedler and I am the Director of St. James Santiago School. The school began in 2013 when I, my husband and another teacher decided to see if a private school in Lincoln City was needed or wanted by families. And what we've discovered is that indeed it is. Since the school began with just eight students, eight students, the enrollment has grown fivefold and we have about another 10 students, I expect, coming in before the fall. The good people of St. James Santiago Church have given us space in the church to use for the school. It's fairly limited space and it has become more and more extended as we've invited more and more students to the school. So this building is a requirement at this point because we're using up every bit of available space in the church, other than the sanctuary and the priest's office to hold classes. And so this building is a modest building, pretty simple, but it will allow us to add the number of families that we expect to come in in the next couple of years, but we also have every intention of keeping the school very small. We'd much rather it inhabited a niche for families who want an arts and science school, families who want a different approach to education than the public school. And so we have no need or wish to become large and unwieldy, we like staying small. Do you have any questions of me?
Any questions?
About the school or? Yes, Miles.
I'm wondering, do you charge tuition or have a scholarship program or?
Yes, we do. It is a private school and so there is a tuition charge. We do have many, many families who receive financial assistance, in fact, over half our families receive financial assistance to come to the school. And that's made possible both by a very lean budget, that's made possible by the church granting us space and also by people who have donated to help students come and attend the school.
Have you developed a statement for your shared parking plan?
No, but it's in existence. That is, we've agreed from the very beginning that that's how it would work. We've not scheduled any school activities, for instance, on weekends. We respect each other's space. The space is shared among a number of other church ministries and so we're, we've created a very respectful use of the space. And so it's not going to be a hard thing to write a letter of agreement between the school and the church.
Okay. And I noticed in the conditions of approval, a comment regarding the parking space dimensions, you're going to meet the code requirements of how big those parking spaces need to be?
Yes, it just needs restriping, I believe, yes.
Do you have a cap for how many students you expect to have?
We'd like to stay around 60 at the maximum. And that would include extending the school to seventh and eighth grade. So that's in our plan, our future plan at this point.
I noticed there was no plan for a sidewalk on 25th Street. Do your kids walk to school?
No, they don't. We don't have any students walking to school, but as Deborah pointed out, we do walk students, just a handful of students, down that back pathway and down through Key and up 22nd to Ocean Lake to catch a school bus at the end of the day, we have a number of students.
Does that take them down behind the Ace Yard?
Right, in that little cul-de-sac.
In that little key spot there, okay. I also associated with that, you don't have any bike parking spaces planned? Kids don't bike to school?
No, we don't, just because of 101. Not a lot of parents want their students to bike, bike on that very busy roadway.
Okay.
If I can interject on that too, our bike requirement for bike parking is based on the number of required parking spaces and since they're not adding any parking spaces, I did not say, determine that they needed to provide bike parking.
Okay, it's not based on the number of existing parking places, it's based on the number that are required for the school itself.
For the school, that's, yeah, that's, and for the school itself, it would be very few, actually, so.
I only have one other question, I don't know if you'll be able to answer or not. Go ahead, Miles.
Do any of the kids walk to school or are they mostly bused by the public bus system of the schools and?
The majority of students are car-pooled in. We have had an occasional parent walk their children to school though, if some intrepid parents who walk quite away sometimes with their students when the weather's nice.
Do they walk from up 25th Street or there aren't sidewalks on both sides of the street?
No, there aren't. It's a very wide street, it's a two-way street and so there's room on the edge to walk. But yeah, I think especially, especially if the land to the north is developed, that sidewalks would be a very good idea on that street.
Any other questions? Nope, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can now take testimony in support of the applications. Do we have anybody that's signed in to speak? That's easy, okay. Anyone testimony in opposition? You all look so friendly out there. See any? All right. Any others, including testimony from representatives of public agencies or questions from public agencies? Nope? So it doesn't look like you need to do any rebuttal? Okay. ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6A states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participated desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? Seeing none? Because no continuance has been requested or no request has been made to hold the record open, do I have a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I motion to close the public hearing and the record on this.
I second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, all right. Okay, where do I go from here? I think probably, yeah.
Actually, the next step would be, does the applicant, the hearings closed and the records closed?
Right.
So number 16 is, does the applicant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record as provided in ORS 197763, Paragraph 6E?
All right. Does the applicant waive that opportunity? Okay, if yes. So, does the city attorney or the staff have any comments concerning legal issues raised during these proceedings, instructions on the applicable law, or legal advice concerning the application of the law to the evidence in the record?
We're here to answer your questions, but this isn't a very complicated application.
No, it is not.
The only thing I might add is that we do have some conditions of approval on the site plan and you may want to adopt those as conditions on the approval, just to make it clean, so we don't have two sets of conditions.
Deborah, does that relate to the fire department signing off on their?
Yes, that's one of the conditions.
And are those in our packet?
They, I believe, are attached to the staff report.
Is that the only one, the fire department? Because that's the only question I had was?
Well, I went through them in my presentation and I just kind of skimmed through them, but there isn't anything that I see as insurmountable. It's just cleaning up some of the details as far as, you know, making sure I have a site plan that, where everything fits up as it's supposed to. There was a little, something a little bit askew about the way the building was set in the, in the original site plan. The other things are just basically kind of making sure you have ADA parking and there are requirements that we have in the code, just things that I called out to make sure that we do. So, yeah, nothing I see as problematic.
Does code require that the classrooms themselves have access to get through a window in case there's a fire?
I'm sure they do and that's again, something that our building inspector and building official will be looking at. I'm trying to remember how many windows it has and I don't know, I think there are windows in every classroom anyway. Yes, yes.
And they're, and they're openable from the inside?
Do we have any new requirements because of some of the situations we're seeing now with schools being taken over? Do we have special police requirements for anything? Or is that something we'd have to address in the future and we'd have to have a request for it?
I am not aware of any changes in the building code, there have been no changes in our site plan requirements.
So I'm looking at packet page, pages 22 and 23, your conditions of approval, that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
So there are a number related to off-street parking. But most, so these have all been provided to the applicant?
Yes, they, yes. The site plan review meeting, we sit down with the applicant, we go through all the, my understanding of the project, make sure that I know exactly what it is they're proposing and then the list of conditions. And I have included them. Here, let's see. Okay, in response to the, the conditional use criteria, the site for the proposed use is adequate, I basically ran through the site plan review conditions, making sure the site plan is accurate, making sure that there's, you know, they'll have to meet the approval of the building inspector and the prior marshal and ODOT if they have any concern. New utilities have to be underground, they have to cover any areas disturbed by construction with new plantings, they need to submit a tree inventory and protection plan, artificial lighting, I want to see the fixtures, clarify the number of parking spaces and dimensions and establish joint use of parking, two ADA spaces and the four-foot perimeter. Again, this is a duplicate, side obscuring fence, this is for the school, special school requirements, and the school shall maintain a play area of a certain size and also a lot area of at least an acre per 90 pupils, so that's going to be in excess of anything they need. So that's it? And then, yeah.
So, Mr. Appicello, if we entertain a motion that includes these conditions, is that the approach?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the site plan review and the presentation.
Conditional use permit?
Use permit.
Or conditional approval.
So it's a motion to approve the conditional use with the conditions as added from the site plan approval?
Exactly what I was going to say.
I second it.
All right, we have a?
So that includes the fire department signing off, correct?
Yes, yeah. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Any discussion? Okay, it passed. This is a tentative decision of the planning commission and a final order for this decision may be presented to the commission later tonight.
Yes, I have drafted, I have drafted a final order in anticipation that you might come to this conclusion. And I have anticipated what your findings would be, but I would like to hear you tell me that, that, how you feel the project compares to these criteria that I have up here.
Do you have a draft of the final order for them to look at?
I do, I have to go make copies of it because I wasn't going to be that presumptuous to bring it with me. So if?
It's up to you, if you want to attempt to get this done tonight, we could take a break, get you some copies, you can sit here and read and see if you believe that Deborah's guess at what you were going to decide is accurate and with the caveat that we need to make sure we add anything, you probably already added the conditions, right?
Yes.
So if you, if you want to take a break and we'll, for five minutes and then we'll go do that, or you can wait till the next meeting to approve the order.
How quickly do you want to get started building? All right, let's take, let's take a five-minute break and Deborah, run. Let's take, let's take a five-minute break, and Deborah, run.
Can she move fast enough?
Richard?
...
Microphones are on.
The sound is up. Sound is up.
Deborah, I'm not seeing in here any statement on the need for a, an agreement on the shared parking. Am I missing it?
By condition eleven.
Oh, I'm, sorry, sorry, sorry. Number eleven. Got it. Got it.
Do you want to reconvene, and then you can start?
Yes. We're going to reconvene. So commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review the conditions? Any questions? Comments?
I'm at a point where I think we ought to go ahead and move to conditional, to approve the conditional use permit, CUP 2018-01. Okay. For Episcopal Church Parish of St. James.
So this is approval of the final order?
Final order that's in my hand. I moved, I moved that we accept it.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. All in fa, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The final order passes. We're done? Yay! Thank, thank you all for coming. I appreciate your attendance, and especially the young ones, to see how, how democracy works. And now I'd like to turn this back over to Steve.
Thank you, Patty, for chairing that portion of the meeting. Do we have any old business?
No.
No news business? What about planning, commissioner, training tonight?
Not tonight. No.
Okay. Now it's time for reports and comments. Staff comments, Richard?
Nothing at this time.
Deborah?
I could mention that for Jeannie Sprague, our new Parks and Recreation Director, that she has scheduled a public meeting on May 2nd to talk about a new park just north of the police station. So she would like to have a big turnout, and hear what people would like to have in that park. I don't remember exactly what time it is, but she'll have posters up and press releases, so keep your eye open for that.
Is that the potential site for a dog park at one point?
That could be part, part of the park, and that's what she wants to hear. What, what do people want to use? There are about three acres there, I think, and she wants to know what people would like to see in that space.
Doesn't she have a public meeting tomorrow night at 5:30?
I don't know her whole schedule. I just know that on May 2nd she's going to have this meeting. I don't know what's going on tomorrow.
The open house is scheduled for May 2nd at 5:30 to 7:00 at the, at the community center.
Oh, thank you.
And I think there is a regular Parks Board meeting tonight, or tomorrow. I'm not sure what time it's...
That would probably be their regular meeting day. Yeah.
Carrie, did you have a comment?
No, I was going to ask if it was the dog park. Was sort of presented to us earlier, so...
Well, we, yeah, we had looked at, I believe, just a kind of a rough concept plan. And now, actually, Jeannie has hired the same landscape architects who are working on the police station to also design the park. And so that'll be really nice to have that, that collaboration, that connection. So, yes, they have provided her with some materials to use in her meeting on May 2nd, and then they will be doing the design work.
Is there a anticipated groundbreaking on the police department at this point?
Oh, Richard can tell you that, maybe.
No, not at this point. They haven't, they haven't finalized the design yet, so they're still working on that.
They're getting pretty close with the design.
They had a preliminary design. Actually, there's an interesting time. They were looking at a particular type of wood for the interior, very thick. And one of the concerns with the police station is, is its resistance to bullets. And so they brought a piece of the proposed interior wood and asked the police to shoot it. And it turned out it was not resistant to bullets.
Oh, really?
So they're back to the drawing board on that piece, so...
Deborah, backing up a step. Do we have any other dog parks or dark in the city?
We don't. And as part of Community Day, Sandy Gruber organized a dog event on Saturday, and they put up a temporary dog park using just orange construction fence, and got a big turnout, and just a lot of really enthusiastic pet owners and pet lovers to show up on Saturday. So, yeah, we've heard a lot about the need for a park, dog park in town.
Is there any way that we, as the planning commission, can recommend or ask formally that they consider putting in a dark dog park for the new facility?
Well, I'd say that that's already covered by city ordinance and probably vested in the Parks Board. Obviously, if there's a development application, you're going to see it. But I think the Parks Board is in charge of making recommendations to the council on development of parks, and then if there is an application, it comes before you.
So we'd have to do that as a private citizen? Just write an email to the Parks Commissioner requesting that they consider putting in a dog park?
Sure. If you're, if you would like to express your support for the dog park, you can either go on May 2nd, or you could, or you could send an email to Jeannie Sprague. It's J.Sprague@lincolncity.org. There is also still a Facebook page for the Lincoln City Dog Park. Isn't that right, Kate? And so you could go like that page and post a comment on that.
I don't want to contradict our city attorney. While it's, it's the job of the Parks Board to make that kind of recommendation, I think you're certainly free to make a recommendation like that if you want to. It's not, wouldn't be like an official, you know, thing within your technical purview, but I don't see any reason why you couldn't, if you choose to, make a recommendation.
So we put that in the form of a motion now?
Or would it be more appropriate to wait for the presentation and see what's in the plan before we do that?
Well, if, if what you want to do is just generally say that you think it, it's important for Lincoln City to have a dog park, and it could be for reasons other than just recreation, maybe it's for tourism, or, you know, whatever your thinking is, you could just make a general motion that you want to support the idea of a dog park in Lincoln City.
If it's into our long-term planning.
Right. So feel free.
Do you want to make that motion?
Well, if I can say so moved, does that get things covered, Kate?
So how would you like your motion to be worded?
Well, the planning commission would like to recommend to the Parks Commission that they highly consider putting in a dog park at the new proposed park location near the police department. Is there a second?
I'm not sure that that's necessarily what we would want to tell them what to do with their parks versus saying a general one where we say we're supportive of a dog park in the community.
So you're recommending a more general support statement?
I would like to be part of it and say more general, because telling them what to do...
I'll take out highly recommended and substitute, please.
How does the motion read now, Kate?
The planning commission recommends to the Parks and Recreation Board that they support creation of a dog park at the southeast, I'm not sure what we're calling it, the southeast third street park site.
Carrie, I have a question for you. Did you want to recommend taking out the particular site as well?
I would like to take out the particular, I would like to take out the particular site, because I don't want to try to tell the Parks Department what their job is.
Would you agree to that?
Yeah. I don't want to tell the Parks Department what to do either.
So eliminating that, Kate, what do we have left?
So it's recommending to the Parks and Recreation Board that they, that they, that the planning commission supports creation of a dog park?
In Lincoln City.
In Lincoln City.
I'll second that.
I'm in can say the other.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The recommendation passes, motion passes. Are there any comments from commissioners?
None.
I, I'm just curious. We, we talked at one point about doing... I, I, I'm just curious. We, we talked at one point about doing some disaster response planning that would include evaluation of potential zoning overlays in areas that are, are at risk. Do we have that scheduled for the near future or can you tell me when we're thinking about doing that? Well, we do have a project underway and, well, we're trying to get the project underway and we're working with the Department of Land Conservation and Development at the state level and our coastal planning person, Meg Reed. And she had been scheduled to come in March and we were not able to get a quorum when she was supposed to be here. So what we have done is scheduled a presentation by Meg Reed at a city council meeting on May 14th. And we would like as many of you to come as possible to hear the presentation. The, she is going to be talking about this, I guess it's probably about a year-long project to do a number of things. One is to take a look at a zoning amendment that would treat the areas of the city in tsunami evacuation areas differently. And to, you know, to decide, you know, that would probably be some kind of an overlay zone and it may have special requirements or limitations, but that is, you know, something that we want to develop and figure out with a committee and, and with the commission and city council. Another part of it is to do tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan. And as, and, and the, part of the information that would go into developing that is a beat the wave analysis that the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries will do for us. And it's an actual modeling that shows us how long it would take to get from any point in the tsunami evacuation area to high ground, to safety. And it considers not only distance, but also the, the surface that you would be walking on in those cases and also facilities, including bridges and that kind of thing. So this has been done in several communities, I think, already. And so Meg will be showing us some of the examples from those other communities. And the, and then the city needs to develop a tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan that prioritizes certain things that we can do to make sure that people evacuate as quickly as possible. So we're, we're getting to that point and we have this meeting scheduled. We, we figured that the council was going to want to hear about it anyway. In fact, I think a couple of council members asked about it when it was on your agenda. So we decided that that would probably be the best approach. And then we make sure that we would be able to have her come and give the presentation and get started. Okay, so I, I will be out of town that day, but I will watch it. That's right. You can stream it. And I would appreciate it if we had a follow-up discussion in this body as soon as possible afterwards. Certainly. We'll put it on the agenda and I think we'll probably be talking about future meetings here shortly and we can figure out when we can do that.
I had a question. I wanted to follow up on something from our last meeting. And Richard, you mentioned at the last meeting that one of the ways the planning commission can help with the housing problem would be to encourage ordinance amendments of bringing forth innovative housing types. And I was wondering if not this evening, perhaps at our next meeting, we could discuss that in more detail about what are some innovative housing type ideas that the city has not addressed yet and how we might go about supporting that if we think there are ideas that are worth supporting with recommending amendments to our ordinances. And if you all feel that would be a good idea. I was encouraged to see that the city council has named housing as its major focus for, I think, the next budget year. Yeah.
Yeah, certainly we can put that on the agenda. That would be on May 1st. We can do that. That's our next meeting.
Work for you? Okay, good. And then in terms of the next meeting, are there any other agenda items coming up for the May 1st meeting? And we have sufficient members present in town to have the second meeting in May or do we need to cancel that?
What I was going to recommend is we cancel the meeting on the 15th. And we do, you do have to meet once a month, so the meeting on the 1st would be the alternative. So that would be when you would go. There was going to be a final order from tonight's meeting, but it's not on the agenda for next meeting anymore.
Took care of that. Thank you, Deborah.
So we, we'll have the innovative housing discussion. We'll probably have some training.
Miles, yes?
I, I'd like to be able to schedule a trip around the area that you said we could have. I'd like to schedule a trip around the area so that we could see our lots and all of the properties that we have. And I'm especially interested in developing the Nelskot Gap area where I think we could develop some commercial buildings to house professional people and such and get some additional business besides the hospitality industry in this community. And, you know, I, I've been here now a little over a year and I think the four members that I've gotten to see have excellent plans. The planning that you've shown me on the Nelskot Gap area or whether the, the community park on 3rd Street is terrific. And you see the, the needs here. And the thing that bothers me the most is that we get grants from the state to do things and then we do great plans, but there's no push and emphasis on getting it done. And I think the housing needs are essential to getting the second industry here, the hospital medical thing done. And I just feel that we should be able to take a more active role. You've got some people on the commission that have the time and the energy to get things. So you've talked to the home, the property owners between 23rd and 32nd or street and such. But where's there, what are we waiting for on, on developing that plan? Well, you've got to go through the steps to get the Nelskot Gap area approved and all into the planning. But everything takes so long to do. I don't think they'll have a, the opportunity, if I live 20 years, to create some jobs here. And I think there is a need for long-range planning, longer than 20 years. And I think that we should, I'd be interested and devote the time to get Representative Gomberg and drop the, the request or, or drop the no jam a little bit to get some state funds so that we can develop the Foothill Boulevard thing, which I think is essential to growth for the Newport, the Nelskot Gap area and for the, the upper villages property. And it could tie the whole community together with a secondary alternative to, to the, to 101 freeway. So I'd like you to think about using us to do some things. And I'd be happy to call Representative Gomberg and drop the thing that we need some state funds here like they are using in Portland and getting the share of the, the bulk of the monies that the gas tax is generating for them.
One of the, one of the ways that we get money to do highway projects is through the State Transportation Improvement Plan. And we have a project actually that's going to happen soon, supposed to happen this year, to improve the Nyatso intersection, and I know this wasn't one of the things you mentioned, but also to provide an off-street, off-site, off-street path between Nyatso and Logan so that, because there's no sidewalk or anything there now. So the reason I'm telling you that is because we, we got that in the State Transportation Improvement Plan five years ago, I believe. And so, I mean, these things do unfortunately take time. But I, I think your idea is a good one, that maybe we should start looking at how to, how to move ahead with the development of the Foothills Boulevard. And we do in fact have a couple of private property owners who have approached us just recently and are interested in developing, but need to see that first connection from 32nd and Fleet up to the, up to their properties. So I think that's a great, great idea and we're going to move ahead with that. I think as the council pointed out the other night, it's easy to get overextended in trying to do so many different things. And, but we are also going to be focusing this year, as they asked, on affordable housing. And I think some of the Foothills Boulevard development could tie into that very well.
I think so. Plus Devil's Lake Water Improvement District is trying to generate a sewer system similar to the, the one that was put in on the west side to hook up to sewer. And this, this line will go all the way down past Sandpoint to provide sewers for the property owners that are there. And so...
Oh, that's excellent.
That's a, if that does take place sometime in the future, and hopefully it will in the next 10 years, there would be a great opportunity to have some state funds to put in the roadway on 32nd up to Foothill Boulevard or where they could develop their land and get it started anyway. And I think we've got to just keep asking the state to give us some attention here because the valley is going to grow and there's no reason that we have to have the lowest income per capita in the county and in the state.
Thank you, Miles. Your suggestions are very good ones and it looks like we have, we're moving in that direction. There is some interest in developing that Foothills Boulevard. Yeah. That's, that's good. Yeah.
So should we call Gomberg and have him after we get a tour of the area?
I think in terms...
I don't want to step on...
I don't want to interrupt you, but I think in terms of the tour, I, we should go forward with that. And perhaps sometime in June when the weather is better and most of us will be back from where we're going in May. And we have hopefully a full commission at that time. A couple of people are.
And it'll be lighter longer, so...
It will be lighter longer. Yeah.
Right. Okay, let's plan on that. That sounds like a great idea.
Okay, any more comments from commissioners? All right, our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for coming, Gary. Go home to your...